Every time the clerk will retrieve them.
Session, please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Spirit, bless everyone present tonight with your guidance, good health and happiness. Allow each of us to fulfill our responsibilities to our community, our Commonwealth and our nation. Let us be inspired by the needs of our community and let us work towards in meeting these needs. Again, bless everyone here tonight, and we ask for all of this in your holy name. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of January the 19th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion, convening the closed meetings, were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion's in order, Council, Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve.
Of a second, Councilman Williams.
Second.
We have a motion of Councilman Fawcett, a second Councilman Williams, any discussion in the motion? Here and none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Approval of the minutes from the July 21, 2021 work session and regular meeting is the next item for consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Councilman Johnson. We have a motion to second, is any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to devote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on a specific agenda item can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda items. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding public hearing item number 16. Mr. Manager, please provide the City Council with an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, listed on the agenda under item 16 is a public hearing to consider in the ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District to RU18 Residential Urban 18 Conditional Zoning District for property located at 5100 Ansmith Parkway, zoning map 20 parcel 19, account number 303740000, RZN 2021-015 Conditional. This item was continued from the December 15th, 2021 City Council meeting and advertised for public hearing this evening. Also within your package is a letter from the applicant dated January 13th, 2022 withdrawing the request for the rezoning of this property. At this time, I would ask City Council's consideration of a motion to amend the January 19, 2022 City Council agenda to remove the public hearing listed as item 16 from this evening's agenda and adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding public hearing item number 17, please note that the City Manager has advised that the applicant has requested to withdraw the project.
Sixteen. Sir, Mayor, it's item sixteen.
Sixteen, I'm sorry. Fifty?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Thank you for... That would be item number sixteen. Therefore, a motion is in order to amend the agenda to remove public hearing item number sixteen from the agenda and adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented would be appropriate, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg.
Move, uh... Do you want to do it?
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
There you go. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Now move to agenda speakers, Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
Alrighty, we will move forward with the consent agenda.
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Library of Virginia Circuit Court Records Preservation Program for the clerk of the Circuit Court. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate a V-stop Reduction in Domestic Violence Grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Item number ten, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Federal Communication Commission for the Suffolk Public Libraries Emergency Connectivity Initiative. Item eleven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate a FEMA grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security for the Suffolk Fire, Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. Item number twelve, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Burn, Justice Assistance Equipment and Training Grant in support of the Suffolk Police Department. Item number thirteen, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Burn, Justice Assistance Equipment and Training Grant in support of the Suffolk Sheriff's Department. Item number fourteen, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services in support of the Suffolk Police Department. And item number fifteen, an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute a grant agreement with the Virginia Outdoor Foundation.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, item seven, the city has received a $21,781 grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management in support of the Department of Fire and Rescue. The grant will support an emergency management salary in the department. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by $21,781. A local match of $21,781 is required and is provided within the FY2122 Fire and Rescue Operating Budget. Item eight, the city has received a grant for $37,387 from the Library of Virginia City Court Records Preservation Program to assist the Suffolk clerk of the Circuit Court with records preservation. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by $37,387, and there is no local match. Item nine, the city has received $56,650 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services in support of the Violence Against Women Reduction and Domestic Violence Program. The grant assists with the salaries for a full-time prosecutor in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by $56,650. A local match of $18,883 is required and is provided within the FY2122 Consolidated Grants Budget. Item ten, the city has received $89,267.50 from the Federal Communications Commission Emergency Connectivity Fund in support of the Suffolk Library. The funds will purchase Chromebooks, mobile hotspot devices, and service plans to assist with educational needs within the community. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by $89,267.50, no local match is required. In regards to item eleven, the city has received $3,410,226 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. This is known as the SAFER Program. For the, and it will cover the recent hiring of eighteen firefighters to support the new fire station number eleven. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by the $3,410,226, and there is no local match. Item twelve, the city has received $18,860 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Brian Justice Assistance Equipment and Training Grant Program in support of the Suffolk Fire, uh, Police Department, excuse me. The grant will be used to fund equipment and training. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by $18,860, a local match of $6,227 is required, which is provided for in the FY2122 Consolidated Grants Fund Budget. Item thirteen, the city has received $11,250 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Brian Justice Assistance Equipment and Training Grant Program in support of the Suffolk Sheriff's Department. The grant will be used to purchase ballistic helmets and entry shells. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grant, uh, Grants Fund by the $11,250, and a local match of $3,750 is required, which is provided for in the FY21 Consolidated Grants Fund Budget. Item fourteen, the city has received $22,425 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services in support of the Suffolk Police Department. The funding will be used to purchase equipment to respond and prevent the spread of COVID-19. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by the $22,425, no local match is required. And last, item fifteen, is authorization, uh, is requesting authorization for the City Manager to execute a grant agreement with the Virginia Outdoor Foundation in an amount of $200,000 to purchase approximately six acres of land on White Marsh Road near the Jericho Ditch Lane entrance to the Great Dismal Swamp Refuge. This project is in partnership between the City of Suffolk and the Great Dismal Swamp Refuge to develop an educational center and a public park. Once constructed and completed, this project will provide a new opportunity in setting for both small and large groups to visit and learn more about the importance of the Grace Dismal Refuge, while also enjoying a new recreation amenity that will include a playground, walking trails, and picnic tables. The project will also be a new amenity to the surrounding neighborhoods and residents.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Pleasure, Council. Councilman Fawcett.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the agenda as presented.
Councilman Johnson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Here and none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to public hearings. As mentioned earlier, item number sixteen has been withdrawn by the act, by the applicant, and the item was removed from the agenda. So we'll move to item number seventeen, which is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a daycare and child day center on property located at 3215 Bridge Road, Suite 3B and 4, zoning map 12, parcel 121, account number 304380200, which is CUP 202122. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Kevin Wine, Acting Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As stated, this is a conditional use permit to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a daycare and child day center use on property located at 3215 Bridge Road, Suites 3B and 4. The subject property is part of the Northern Growth Area in a Ring Suburban Use District. The subject property is Zone B2, General Commercial Zoning District, and is surrounded by the existing shopping center, consisting of various commercial businesses, as well as the Retreat at Bennetts Creek Residential Subdivision to the south. The existing daycare and learning center is currently located within the Bennetts Creek Shopping Center, and this use received a conditional use permit in July of 2016. As a part of this amendment request, the use is proposing to expand into an adjacent suite, which will result in an increase in size, which is the hope that the applicant will accommodate an anticipated increase in enrollment. With that being said, a major amendment to the existing conditional use permit is necessary, necessitating this application. The existing daycare currently operates with, uh, within a 3,000 square foot suite located within the shopping center. The current hours of operation are Monday through Friday, uh, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and no change in those hours are proposed. As a part of this request, the daycare currently has ten full-time employees, and it's anticipated to hire three additional staff members to accommodate the potential increase in enrollment. There is an existing fenced-in playground area consisting of 2,100 square feet located in the adjacent side yard, which would be utilized between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. It will be subject to meeting all standards as required by the Virginia Department of Education as it relates to outdoor play area ratios. Based on the available outdoor play area, approx, uh, 28 children would be permitted outdoors at any given time. The proposed expansion will allow for a potential increase in enrollment from 60 students to 93 students, of which final allowable occupancy will be determined by the city's building official. Staff has reviewed the request as it relates to the Unified Development Ordinance and Comprehensive Plan, and has determined that the proposed expansion represents a logical expansion of an existing use that has operated harmoniously with, uh, the surrounding uses over the last several years, and as such, staff is recommending approval of this request. The Planning Commission at their meeting on December 21st, 2021, voted seven to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this request, and with that being said, that with the conditions as outlined in the staff's report. That can, uh, cludes my presentation, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, I will be happy to address any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Carl Williams. This is my wife, Melvina Williams. We live at 300 Princess Arch, Suffolk, Virginia, uh, probably about three miles away from the existing daycare center. We're here today to ask you if you would allow us to expand, uh, and we're grateful for, I guess roughly about five years ago, you did grant us the right with the conditional use permit to open where we are now. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker, please. We have anyone else to speak in favor of?
Name is Wallace Johnson, live at 2086 Ansmith Parkway in Suffolk, Virginia. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Madam Clerk, I would ask tonight if the council would approve this, uh, conditional use permit for this daycare center. They've been there for quite some time. They've done a great job and continue to do a great job, and they're looking to even hire more people and do even greater things for children that are kind, coming to try to learn, and I ask that the council would approve this condition use permit for them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for Council's consideration. Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to congratulate them. I remember them coming in 2016 to do it, and they've done an exceptional job at that location. They provide a great service for our folks out there. It gives me more, the more than pleasure to, to ask for an approval of this particular conditional use permit, and good luck to you in the future as you expand. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
I second the motion.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, and a second from Council, Vice Mayor Bennett. Any discussion of the motion? Here and none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is a consideration of an appeal of the decision of the Historic Landmarks Commission in regard to request for certificate of appropriateness, HLC 2021-00035 for property located at 512 West Washington Street, zoning map 34G17, block 2A, parcel 2A asterisk 3. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, again, Kevin Wine, Acting Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Before you this evening is an appeal of a decision made by the Historic Landmarks Commission. The appeal relates to the HLC's decision on December 9th, 2021 to deny a portion of a request to replace an existing metal tile roof, a metal shingle tile roof on sloping portions of a roof with architectural shingles in charcoal black color at 521 West Washington Street. Specifically, the applicant is appealing the HLC's decision, excuse me, to deny the request and is requesting permission to install architectural shingle to replace the existing metal tile shingle in question. The property was constructed circa 1890 in the Queen Anne Victorian style and is located within the city's West Inn Historic District. The property is located at the northeastern corner of the intersection, um, I'm sorry, the northwestern corner of the intersection of West Washington Street and Brewer Avenue, and is zoned CBD Central Business District. The applicant did provide a condition statement from a roofing contractor detailing the poor condition of the roof, uh, both the pitched and the flat portions, and specifically, the statement notes that the repair would be impractical, and replacement is the most practical solution in this case. Like I said, the applicant is proposing to replace the deteriorated metal tile shingle with an architectural shingle of a similar color, um, and in making their decision, the HLC consulted the guidance as outlined within the Suffolk Historic District Guidelines, which of note include Section I, one, roof designs vary considerably within the Historic Conservation Overlay District, and are one of the key character-defining elements of the style of the house. The type of roof covering is also important in defining the character, formality, structure, and texture of the house and street. Consequently, historic roofing materials should be preserved and maintained. Section 1.4, when replacing a roof, match original materials as closely as possible. Avoid, for example, replacing a standing seam roof with asphalt shingles, as this would dramatically alter the building's appearance. Section I.7 states that traditional roofing materials, such as a standing seam metal, are preferred over asphalt shingles, but not required. And Section 1.8, when the original roofing material has already been replaced with asphalt shingles and re-roofing becomes necessary, then at a minimum, the roof in material shall be upgraded to an architectural-grade shingle. Additional guidance can be found in the Secretary of Interior Standards relating to treatment of contributing historic resources. Specifically, these standards note that where replacement is determined to be necessary, the new feature shall match the old in design, color, texture, and other visual qualities, and where possible, materials. This illustration serves as, uh, serves as an example of the large amount of roof area in question on the structure. It's nearly 5,000 square feet total of, of roof area. The yellow portions represent the flat portions. This was, uh... represent the flat portions. This was an element of the application that was approved by the HLC to allow for a TPO membrane roofing in this area. The white portions, the unhighlighted areas, represent the sloped portions of the roof, subject to this appeal request. So, in summary, the applicant is appealing the HLC's decision to not allow for the replacement of existing metal tile shingles with architectural shingles of a very similar color. A roofing contractor provided a statement noting that it was impractical to preserve and maintain the existing metal shingles, and as I noted, when re-roofing a deteriorated roof, use of a product that would not dramatically alter the building's appearance should be used. It's important to note that in exercising its powers, city council may, in conformity with the provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance, reverse or affirm wholly or partly or may modify any order requirement decision or determination appealed from and make such order requirement decision or determination as ought to be made, and to that end, shall have all the powers of the HLC. The city council shall consult with the HLC in relation to any appeal and may require documentation regarding any decision prior to the appeal. That concludes my report at the conclusion of the public hearing. I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good afternoon, council. I'm Whit Harper. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Fuller. I'm from Saunders in Ahada. I realize I'm the last public hearing today, so I'm going to try to kind of be brief on this, but I do want to touch upon a couple of things as it relates to this appeal. The section that established the Historic Conservation Overlay District and the review committee there notes that the goal of recognizing Suffolk's unique character and promoting conservation and preservation of the city's historic resources and properties, which properties is what we're talking about here. In this case, this property, we have here estimates which we can provide to you for the property itself. There's the difference between a standing seam roof and the roof that Ms. Fuller proposes is $48,500, and I have that for you here. I would also say for you that we have letters of support from all of her immediate neighbors in favor of allowing her to do that. Finally, I want to talk about a couple of things that Mr. Wine summed up very nicely there. Section 1.4 says, "When replacing a roof, match original materials as closely as possible. Avoid, for example, replacing a standing seam roof with asphalt shingles." Ms. Fuller's not proposing to replace a standing seam roof with asphalt shingles. Her porch would remain a standing seam roof as it is. The shingles that are on there, part of the roof is, that's not already asphalt shingles, that can be seen from Brewer and from West Washington, are middle tile roofs. She went out and she looked to try to find somebody who could repair those, and Mr. Wine summed it up, but I just want to make sure that I've got the exact language of the contractor, one who's also here, if, should you have any questions. He wrote back on October 11, and this is in your packet, "Existing middle tile and other middle roofing on the majority of the house is badly deteriorated, and effective repair would be practically impossible." So, you know, when we look through these sections that have gone through, and Mr. Wine read out so kindly, it would be, "When replacing a roof, match original materials as closely as possible." Candidly, beyond, you know, is it possible to even find those tiles? Maybe. Is it fiscally impossible for Ms. Fuller? She's here, and I would proffer, and you can certainly question her on that. She can't cover that difference, and so if we're going back to, again, the goal of preserving the city's historic properties, candidly, if she's not going to be in there, you know, the interior's certainly not being conserved right now with tarp on it, and, you know, I have a concern that, you know, if she's not allowed to replace this roof, that the building itself is going to, you know, become dilapidated. We also have here, if you'd like to see them, you know, this is the house right now with the tarp. This is how it looks. You know, potentially, this is how it continues to look if you can't replace the roof, and, you know, this is what the house would look like with the shingle that she's provided. The shingle that's selected in that, in your packet is charcoal black. We have a copy of that also here. She would proffer that this is definitively the shingle she would use, but that the carriage house, which has the original tiles behind her house, would remain the same, would still have the middle tiles, and her roof would maintain its standing seam roof. So, that's what I've got for you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We're asking Ms. Fuller or a contractor here to answer them. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We get our next speaker to speak in favor. Do we have anyone else here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none. Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Councilman? At this time, you are required to address the Historic Landmarks Commission appeal, which you can reverse, affirm wholly or partly, or may modify any part of what's been presented. So therefore, a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Fuller, would you come up, please?
Hello?
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. You and I have talked on a couple of occasions. Can you just sort of tell the council the stress that you've had with this and trying to preserve that home, and how much, if the roof goes, what else goes?
Well, the problem is, it's leaking, and I'm afraid I'm going to be having mold in the house shortly, because I've got pictures. My bedroom ceiling has got water all on the top, and then I think we might have mold, because my mother, who lives with me, she's 92, and lately, she's been coughing all the time, and I think it's because of that. We are going to take her to the doctor, but you can't live in a house that has mold, and I want to keep the house. I love the house, but I can't live in it if the roof is leaking.
Now, some of the other neighbors, they certainly have said that they don't mind you doing that, but some of the other houses has already have been replaced with asphalt shingle. I know a couple of homes. I did a pretty good search the other day when I was over there walking, and I noticed a number of homes that had asbestos shingle, the architectural shingle, I mean, on those, and I thought they all looked great. So, with that, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval.
So I believe your motion would be to reverse the-
Reverse the decision, yes, sir.
Okay, we've got Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I reviewed the document that Ms. Fuller wrote, and I found it to be very informative. As much as sometimes we'd like to preserve some of the historical landmark items, there has been provisions in that area for people to have some changes. You know, when I read this, I'm just completely overwhelmed by the fact that for her to put back something that this house is 111 years old, and the cost of that would just be astronomical at $75,000 just to do this roof. That's mind-blowing. We got a choice to either help you to get where you need to go, which would cost you about 25 estimated, but you get to keep your home. You get to keep the house on the street, or we can let this not get approved, and you turn around and the police comes dilapidated, dilapidated, excuse me. So then, we have an eyesore on Washington Street where we're trying to improve the conditions of this area and the roadway. So it's only fitting, and I cannot sit here and not allow you to do it. You have to have this opportunity. I think that roof is going to look fine. It's going to look great, and the pictures depict that. So my heart goes out to you, and I am going to second Mr. Goldberg's motion, so that you'll have that, maybe if this council votes in favor, to give you that opportunity to save your home, because you're taking care of your 90-some-year-old, 95-year-old mama, and I give you every prop in the world for doing that, because you only get one mom, and you're doing a good job. So that's what I wanted to say to you tonight.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
And I was going to second it as well, Ms. Fuller, because I respect what you're doing. I also would like to thank the Historic Landmarks Committee for doing their job. This is what we are paying them to do or asking them to do, but I would also like to encourage this council and our city manager to proceed with changing the Historic Landmarks Commission so that they can deal with this. It shouldn't be a question, and I think this council, I can't speak for everyone up here, I think we all feel the same way. We need to control the way these homes are improved, but we need to allow people the latitude to stay there and to be able to afford it. So with that, I fully support allowing you to go forward and look forward to seeing it when it's done. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I just have one comment before we call for the vote. I mean, it's my understanding, and Mr. Harvey, correct me if I'm wrong, but you more or less proffered this grade of shingle in that color.
That is correct, Your Honor. It would be the charcoal gray here.
Okay, and it's the same quality shingle? Because I've looked at it, it's a very good-looking shingle, and I, just to reaffirm what Councilman Johnson said, you know, we are way past time to update our guidelines for our historic overlay district. I too want to thank the commission for doing their job, because that's what they did. They have a guideline, they have books, and they've been charged with ensuring that the overlay district remains viable, if you will, and I think they've done their job. When I'm looking at Section 1.8, and it states, "When the original roofing material has already been replaced with asphalt shingles and re-roofing becomes necessary, then at a minimum, the roofing material shall be upgraded to an architectural-grade shingle." So had this been done prior, there's not a requirement to replace it with the metal seam roof. So in essence, you know, we're kind of adhering to what had been in here, if it wasn't after the fact. So by upgrading it to an architectural-grade shingle, a good-looking architectural-grade shingle, then in essence, we're, you know, complying with Section 1.8 in the event that it had been done before. So with that, I mean, also lend my support to it. So we have a motion for denial from Councilman Goldberg and a second from Councilman Fawcett. Reversal.
Reversal.
Yeah, reversal, I'm sorry. Reversal, reversal. Denial, let me start. We have a motion for reversal of the Historic Landmark Commission decision. Hearing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We have no ordinances this evening, no resolutions, and no staff reports. We do have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, February 2, 2022, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled. The motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
And a motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Councilman Ward. Got a second from Councilman Ward. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers, and if so, please read the guidelines.
Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Wallace Johnson, 2086 Nansman Parkway, representing self regarding redistricting and state of the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Madam Clerk. I was going to speak on the redistricting, but want to save that for a little later. Want to talk about the city. I have some major concerns, especially with Nansman Parkway and Portsmouth Boulevard. Yesterday afternoon, around 4:30, quarter to 5, a young man and a young lady almost lost their life, come within maybe 20 feet of losing their life. They were working on the highway there. That young man and that young lady was myself and my wife. We've got to do something about the traffic, the cars, the way we're building things, the way you guys are just letting stuff come into our cities. It's almost like you just vote stuff in and just let it go. You don't go out, you don't look, you don't see, you don't look at the way things are situated, the traffic, the way that stuff is sitting out there on Portsmouth Boulevard and Nansman Parkway, the potholes, the mud holes, and it's been like that for a long, long time, not just getting started. It's been that way for a while. Please, come out, take a look at it. The contractors that you all are hiring, they must be amateurs. Nobody will go down a highway with one of those great big concrete barrels that you put in the ground on the back of a pickup truck and then try to make a U-turn on a highway. It's uncalled for. Had me and my wife lost our life yesterday, what would you do? How would our families feel by somebody else's incompetence? It doesn't make sense. We need to take a better look at what we're doing. The other thing I want to say, I've been coming here for quite some time now, and I listen at council, I look at the decisions you guys make. I hope and I pray, I looked at the compassion that you all had tonight in making some decisions. I wish you all would have that same compassion in making other decisions with other people like you made in here tonight, because sometimes you don't do that. It's not always what you say, it's how you see it, and you got to understand that other people have feelings just like you do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
I'm trying. My earring got it, bro Jackson. I'm doing it. I'm doing it, bro Jackson. Hold on. Praise the Lord. Good evening. This is Carolyn White from Pewsville. I'm here again, and I'd like to say I hope you all received the email, the video, the pictures of Armstrong Street. I hope you all had a minute to go back to May 5, 2021, when Mr. Robert Lewis spoke, and Mr. Robert Lewis said- and Mr. Robert Lewis said, "We don't want to take anybody's houses." Also, Mr. Hanson, when he was here, said, "We don't have any money to buy anybody's houses." Then, on January 5, 2022, you all passed an ordinance to take somebody's house. Matter of fact, two of them. When I walked out there and I saw Ms. Jacqueline Davis Cheeseman sitting, and I saw a young girl sitting with her, and I said, "Who is this young lady?" She said, "This is my daughter." Now, this is a single mom with a daughter, a teenage daughter in school, but you're going to take her out of a home that they've been living in for over, well, not the daughter, but the lady herself, been there over forty years. But you say it's needed. But when you see that video, you see it doesn't have to happen. And just tonight, you just reversed the decision? You have this opportunity now. Those of you who said you didn't want to do it, but you're doing it for the money, and I know myself, and you know, each one of you know, it doesn't cost $7 million to put some pipes down a street, and we really wouldn't need a retention pond if you would pipe the water out of Pewsville. So listen to your hearts. And I'm sure Mr. Lewis, wherever he is, is having a reconciliation, too. Because God knows, if they came to any one of your neighborhoods and say, "We need this house, let's take your house, let's take your house, Councilman," you'd be just as upset. So we're working for our community? You say, "Carolyn, why are you involved?" I'm involved because I love the Lord. My job is to do His will. And if each one of you up there just praise and say you love the Lord and you're working for the Lord, then listen to your heart and do what does says the Lord. Just like Councilman Ward said before, each one of you have a higher authority, whether you believe it or not. So you're going to have to answer, it might not be today, but when the time comes, just like we put on the paper, Sandy Patty's song, "When my time comes," you're going to have to answer. Thank you for the redistricting, for the third map, because half of you just zoot through Pewsville, some of you've never been through Pewsville, but we are a loving community. Vice Mayor can tell you that. He sat up on a number of tables eating some good food. He's come to a number of cookouts, eating some good food. So has Lou. So I'm asking you tonight, you rescinded that, you can rescind that ordinance tonight and make a difference. God bless you all.
The next speaker is Wayne White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Good afternoon, Councilman, Councilwoman. I just want to say, first of all, I wrote down some things that I wanted to say. Well, first of all, the sidewalk, I want to keep that on the agenda's mind. We need a sidewalk all the way down Town Point Road to Pewsville Road, where as our kids can catch the bus, they can stand on the sidewalk instead of standing in the streets, you know. It's getting cold now, and the kids are bundling up in the middle of the street, so when people come down the street or whatever, it's getting dark in the morning, they may not see them. But we don't want any of our kids to get hurt. I heard Councilmen say, "Ma'am, we want you to stay there." I heard another one say, "We want you to save your home." Okay. We are trying to say there on where y'all want to take these two houses, there's plenty, plenty of room on the right-hand side of these houses, on the left-hand side of these houses, where that retention pond can be. There's Taylor Avenue has plenty of property back there, wooded property, where the retention pond could be, you know. Like one of the guys stated to me, I'm not an engineer, but I've been there and I've seen where the water road. Okay. The next thing, I went to the Bowls Hill interchange study yesterday. They have a line that says, "All of the houses in Pewsville belong to Suffolk." The interstate, they got a Suffolk line running right next to the interstate. So all of those houses that are deemed in Chesapeake, according to VDOT, those houses belong to Suffolk. When I first became president of Civic League about 21 years ago, there was a deacon white, one of my, one of the deacons at the church that I went to, half of his house was in Suffolk, half of his house was in Chesapeake. He paid water bill in Suffolk, taxes in Chesapeake. There was three or four more houses through there. So if we can't get these lines straight, where it goes through Pewsville, who knows who lives in what neighborhood? Right? I mean, because I distinctly remember how the lines ran through people's houses. Now, all of a sudden, you want to redistrict this and redistrict that, where's the lines in Pewsville? You know, I want somebody to be able to show me, you know, because half of the people that live in Pewsville in Chesapeake, now, according to VDOT, they live in Suffolk. That's all I want to say. And I know the people in Chesapeake really aren't too interested in coming back and living in Suffolk. But if the lines say they're in Suffolk, then what are we going to do? I just want you to think about that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, representing the
Hello, City Council. My address is 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23321. When I heard tonight, when Mr. Roberts looks, the one that was doing the redistricting, because you have a bunch of Roberts, he said that Councilman Ward has all of Pewsville. Well, guess what? I live in Pewsville. I am not a Suffolk resident and do not want to be a Suffolk resident. I am Chesapeake. Also, I also went to VDOT meeting last night, and their way is absolutely right, the map is incorrect. I pulled off the internet on y'all website, and it clearly states and shows that the map says my street and all of the Chesapeake is in Suffolk. Now, I'm not in control of the maps and what goes on the internet, but y'all need to do y'all research. And Mr. Lewis say he can stand up in law against it and stand up for all three of those maps? Oh, please do so. Also, what is very concerning is the fact that you all asked last time that when you asked for a third map, and by the way, you know that's the father, son, and the holy ghost? You all wanted to see the streets and where the lines were actually divided, and you said then that you couldn't see it in the room. Well, Vice Mayor, you were standing up trying to see and couldn't see it. Okay? How can you all, any one of you, make a decision to provide something to us that you can't see or read? You going off of something that somebody is saying. Well, when I think about it, when you look in the Bible, and you talk about integrity and vows that you make, you might want to trial Numbers 32 to 4. Vows that you make, you better make sure when you swear it in that you're going to do something you're going to do. Do it. Deuteronomy 23, 21 to 22, God wants you to quickly to do your vows. And Matthew 5, 33 to 36, when you swear on the oath in heaven or earth, God has both, you might want to check it out. Also, what is concerning to me also, when you spoke of the lady that was trying to keep her home, and you had to go through all these things that she had to go through to keep her house, you, Councilman Fawcett, you want to help her to keep her home. She's been there, and you give her honor to taking care of mother, and so do I. However, she loves her home. So do the lady that you're trying to take it away from in Pewsville. She loves her home, and she has many years there, too. But you, the first thing in this new year, you all voted to take away a home, based off of what grounds? You said that it was old. Her home is old, too. But just because something is old does not mean that it loses value at all. And you know, when you think about it, if it's still standing, it got favor by God. But why are we not looking at trying to help just like her or any other person that needs help with rebuilding their home so they can continue to live in their home? You don't think about that, and you talk about that, you need this retention pond put in there, and it's going to be nice. Well, guess what? You, that retention pond where you're talking about putting it at, it's not going to take the water where it's flooding at because it doesn't flood there. But how about behind Pewsville Park that y'all own, the land behind Pewsville Park? That's a good place for a retention pond. How about since you all that took part of Chesapeake tonight, which you don't have, but Chesapeake has a retention pond on Clifton Street? But next to the retention pond, that property do belongs to Suffolk, and it's nothing but wooded land. If you all would put a retention pond there, connect it to the retention pond that Chesapeake already have, then all of the streets on Clifton, John, Clifton Pearl, John and James Street would not be flooding like it does when it comes to the rain. So I want you all to realize one thing, just like we say, and you stand up and you open up in prayer to God, don't just be with God at the beginning and then leave Him out in the middle and then close Him out at the end of your meeting at the end.
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
Because you have to be careful for everything that comes out your mouth, because you have to be held accountable for it, not just to us, to God, and the other people that are watching, that will speak. And I shall not be silent, and I'm not moving to Suffolk.
Our final speaker this evening is Garrett Waters, 105 Babtown Road, representing
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of city council. My name is Garrett Waters. I reside at 105 Babtown Road in Suffolk, Virginia. A little bit of background about me, I've mentioned this before, but I'll mention it each and every time in case someone tunes in new, maybe they're watching, who knows? I've studied communicable disease for 21 and a half years while I served in the world's greatest, strongest, safest nuclear navy. I did notice that there is no health department here again this evening to update anyone on COVID numbers or cases or PCR testing or Omicron variant or who knows what in the ham sandwich is going on in America, so I'll fill everybody in. The Supreme Court recently has ruled that healthcare workers are the only people who can't make decisions about their very own health. So that happened, that just happened. In order to stay current, we must sometimes visit the past. So I'm going to go through a couple of examples here. In 1931, the Rockefeller Institute for Medical Investigations infected human subjects with cancer cells in order to carry out radiation experiments. That was in 1931. In 1932, some folks may be aware of this, this was when syphilis was given, and it was the Tuskegee Syphilis Study, in which 200 black men were diagnosed with syphilis, were never told of their illness, and were used as human guinea pigs to better understand the symptoms of disease. None of these folks received any treatment, and only 74 survived. That was in 1932, the Tuskegee Experiment. In 1940, malaria. In order to test experimental drugs to fight malaria, 400 prisoners in Chicago were infected with the disease. 1942, mustard gas, 4,000 service members, most of whom were conscientious objectors, were subjected to mustard gas to see what would happen to a person after they were hit with mustard gas. 1950, radiation. The Department of Defense detonates nuclear devices in the desert areas, and then they monitor unsuspecting civilians in the cities downwind of the blast. I can give you more examples, but I digress. The vaccines in use to mitigate and prevent COVID do not mitigate disease, they do not prevent disease. They do not prevent death. The vaccines in use to mitigate and prevent COVID are experimental. It doesn't matter if it's approved or authorized, it's experimental. This is why Pfizer asked the FDA to give them a stay of 76 years before they released the results. Pfizer, the one that's approved. The vaccines do cause 68,700 miscarriages. These are according to VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Reporting System. You can log on to the CDC website and find these numbers. 200,000 heart attacks, 250 cases of Bell's palsy, 442,000 cases of myocarditis and pericarditis, just to name a few. Can anyone in here hazard a guess on how many Omicron deaths there have been in the United States of America? I know you're probably not going to throw out any numbers. Let's throw out some crazy numbers. 50,000, 60,000, 70,000? The truth is, one person has died from Omicron in the United States of America. One person. And for this, we're taping off seats. For this, we're requiring kids to go to school with a mask. That was just rescinded. Whether we agree with that or not, it doesn't matter. What does matter is people have freedom. They have the freedom to send their child to school with a mask, or they have the freedom to not send their child to school with a mask. The big question is, are we, as you all represent different boroughs of our great city here, are you going to support the people in your districts and our city that support freedom? Take a step back, take a deep breath, confer with the health department whenever they decide to show up and let us know what's going on with our great city. I really think it's important, too, that we take a moment and think of our first responders, the ladies and gentlemen who just a couple hours ago had to respond to a horrific event, allegedly that has happened south of here, down towards Whaleyville. A horrific event. And more details will follow, I'm sure. Some of you folks, you're probably not even aware, my wife and I, we live out that way, ton of fire trucks, a lot of stuff going that way. So please, if you get a chance, thank a fireman, thank an EMT, thank a police officer. It's one thing to shake their hand, but really, talk to these folks. They're protecting our city and they're saving lives, and God bless them right now because it's a mess out there here.
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor. And that's the final speaker as well.
We will now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor Dooman. A motion to nominate and appoint John Broderick to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, representing the Chappattuck Borough.
Motion being ordered. Councilperson LaBarlow. A motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett.
I can motion.
We have a second. Any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember LaBarlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Are there any new business items that require the action of city council for consideration? Here are none. We'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time- Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I will ask if interim media and community relations director Tim Kelly has any announcements.
Helps when you look at the stuff right in front of you. There we go. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Well, as we know, winter is here, and the possibility of inclement weather is upon us. The National Weather Service has issued a winter storm watch for the City of Suffolk and surrounding areas related to the threat of possible snow and severe winter weather conditions starting tomorrow, Thursday, the 20th, continuing into the weekend. The city's Office of Emergency Management is coordinating with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the National Weather Service to monitor weather forecasts. City staff are preparing ahead of potential impacts to roadways and city services. Now, the present plans call for Public Works operations to begin 24-hour staffing tomorrow, Thursday, and remaining in effect through the weekend to address any roadway issues, including plowing, which will begin on designated primary roads when required. Now, operations will consist of 12-hour shifts, with each shift having 20 to 24 trucks running with plows and spreaders. The roadway division for Public Works is responsible, of course, for clearing snow and ice from Suffolk public streets. Now, with safety and emergency accessibility being the primary concerns, the first priority is given to all primary or main roadways, followed by secondary arterials and connectors. Neighborhood streets are cleared last, and due to the size of the equipment, configuration of neighborhood streets and the presence of cars parked in the street may not be accessible by city plows. An interactive map, though, on the city's priority routes for public paved roadways within the city can be viewed online at the link showed at the bottom of the screen. So just to let you know about that, ahead of the winter storm, we're looking at heading into tomorrow. And congratulations in order, several members of Suffolk Police Department. City manager recently announced the appointment of Alfred Al Chandler as Chief of Police for the City of Suffolk effective January the 7th. Chief Chandler began his career with the Suffolk Police Department in 1999. In his time on the force, he served in many capacities, including field training officer, SWAT team operator, lieutenant, captain, and deputy police chief over the Detective Bureau, Special Investigations, CSI, and Crime Analysis Units. Chief Chandler has most recently served, of course, as interim chief of police since June 15th of 2020. Congratulations also in order to some new officers. The Police Department was proud to welcome six new members to the department on January the 13th during a badge-pinning ceremony here in City Council Chamber. And again, we say congratulations to those officers, of course, pictured there with new chief, Al Chandler. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has given an award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting to the City of Suffolk for its Popular Annual Financial Report, or PAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. The City of Suffolk has received this award for the last seven consecutive years. This honors a prestigious national award recognizing conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local government popular reports. The report provides an overview of the city's financial results, and is designed to increase awareness throughout the community of the city's financial operations in a user-friendly manner. Now, the PAFR is available for viewing on the city's website, and hard copies are available at the Finance Department and Media and Community Relations Department office located here in Suffolk City Hall. This month marks the fifth year of the Suffolk Library's participation in Beanstack's Annual Winter Reading Challenge. This year's challenge began on January the 1st and ends on January 31st, but it's not too late to take part and be in the mix for some great prizes. This year's theme is Read for a Better World, encouraging readers of all ages to explore diversity, empathy, and action through literature. You can register today on the Suffolk Public Library website and start logging your reading with paper logs as well. You can get those at Morgan Memorial or North Suffolk, and again, you still can log those online. Participants must log the reading, though, in order to be entered into the weekly and grand prize drawings. And residents seeking a COVID-19 vaccine are encouraged to visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or contact the State Call Center to find out a vaccination location convenient to them. And the Virginia Department of Health also has information online for those looking for much-in-demand COVID testing locations, and that's at the web address at the bottom of the screen right there. And we'll leave you, as always, with the ways we reach out to our residents and business owners, and encourage you to call the number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, 514-4000, if you want to get connected with city services, speak to city staff. We have staff there to answer questions and direct you to the right place. With that, say good evening to all.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Sir.
We'll now move on to announcements from council, or we'll start with Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Um, it, it's been, it's been quiet, and that's a good thing. I attended the Greater Chuckettuck Oakland Civic League meeting on Monday night. We had good discussion, but not great turnout, but it was a holiday that, I hope everyone was celebrating Martin Luther King Day. Um, but we had a good conversation and a good meeting, and I look forward to the next one in February. And, um, other than that, I, I thank everyone for the support of the appointment that we had tonight for economic development and otherwise no other news, and I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Johnson.
And I'll be brief as well. First off, I'd like to congratulate Chief Chandler. We've always already put him hard at work. Um, with the impending storm coming up, I guess he'll probably be harder at work, but to all the citizens, please be careful, stay home, enjoy the snow, appreciate your kids, um, but just be very, very careful, particularly on our roads. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be real brief. Um, first off, um, with the impending storm, if you see some of our Public Works people out there in the roadways trying to support conditions, kind of yield to them a little bit and give them a little distance so they could do their job. There's no telling what this storm is going to do. I mean, we could get a little, or we could get a lot, who knows? Best thing I can tell you, if you believe a weatherman, you might as well run outside and take a look for yourself. So anyway, um, I think that's all I'm going to say tonight. I had a lot to say, but I'm going to reserve it to another time. Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief also. Uh, just would like to say, um, I'm pleased to announce that the COVID-19 community testing on Friday, January the 14th, at the East Suffolk Recreation Center, held by the Suffolk Health Department and the City of Suffolk, was able to provide 351 people with COVID testing. Um, according to a Health Department representative, this was the largest turnout from the COVID tested thus far, um, in 2022. I would also like to, um, give kudos to, um, Tim Kelly and the Media Department for keeping our citizens informed as to what's happening in Suffolk, um, and using social media, um, in particular, Nextdoor. Got a lot of calls from, um, citizens throughout the city, um, that had, have informed me that, you know, they have, they, they've been watching Nextdoor, and they've been able to get a lot of information from Nextdoor. Also, um, Al, if you would, please, um, could you give some of our citizens in the Pleasant Hill community, um, a kind of brief, um, overview as to how the American Plan, Rescue Plan, um, funding was appropriated, and what's the status as we move on, move forward with the, um, streets and sidewalks and curvings?
Yes, sir. Of course, um, last spring, uh, we brought forth, uh, a package of projects for City Council's consideration on the ARPA funding, where we received, uh, $32 million, uh, dollars, and that was, uh, allocated to different communities. Uh, Council took action on that, that evening, um, or the subsequent, uh, meeting, excuse me. And then, of course, uh, staff is working to, uh, get those, uh, projects underway. Um, some are going to be contracted, some would be, uh, done on by in-house services. So, of course, there's period of design, there'd be a period of construction, um, or a period of design bid, and then construction for those that are done outside house, and then those done inside house would be, uh, some design and, uh, staff would work those. Uh, I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. My word for the month of January 2022 is gratitude, the quality of being thankful, readiness to show appreciation for and to return kindness. With that, I'd like to say goodnight, and everybody, please be safe.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to, uh, follow up and support and congratulate Al Chandler, Police Chief. I wish him well. Uh, has a big, a lot of work to be done. We have a lot of issues that we have to, have to work on. Uh, and lastly, uh, again, with the weather, please be safe, and please be careful out there. It's a, be a dangerous time, no matter what we, what we get, uh, we have a tendency in this area not to know really how to drive in snow and get around in snow, so please be careful and watch what you do, and, and certainly, uh, again, like, uh, I think Mr. Fawcett said, if there's a city employee out there trying to do something, please give way and try to, try to be as kind as you can to, so that, uh, get the job done that you, you want done. With that, Mayor, I say goodnight.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I'd like to also congratulate Police Chief Al Chandler for his new position. And also like to, uh, thank council for adding on the third map for redistricting. I think it's very important. And with that, I'll say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a brief update on, um, National Park, you know, on Portion Boulevard. I know you and I have talked about, uh, some of the concerns out there in the past, so maybe if you don't mind, just give a brief update on some of the problems that existed, the reason that, uh, the contractor was taking some of this time, if you don't mind.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, make sure I understood the question.
The, uh, traffic on National Park, we were doing sidewalks on Portion Boulevard, brother.
Okay.
Portion Boulevard.
Okay.
And you was telling me there was some problem with the water lines and whatnot, so the public will know exactly what, uh, your concerns, what the concerns were with that.
Yes, sir. There's a couple items there. One, uh, they did have a conflict with a water main they found in the field, which slowed up some activity, uh, there. Of course, you noticed it stood still for, uh, a few weeks there. They got this, a lot of sidewalk, uh, some sidewalks graded and ready to go, but the drainage work that was going on, they had to do some surveying, which we saw also, um, I think in talking with the, uh, Mr. Lewis, uh, there is some delivery, uh, delays in concrete pipe also, uh, that has probably impacted that, but I know it's impacted 58, uh, work. So, uh, there has been some, uh, s- uh, snags, but they're back, uh, I'm understanding they're back at it, um, right now, weather, weather permitting.
Right. Well, I've been seeing them out the last few days. They've been out there back working and doing, um, some cutting in the asphalt out there, trying to get those drop-ins in, so, uh, that's what they were doing today and a couple days past. Um, also, I would just like to, uh, congratulate, uh, Chief Chandler on the promotion to, uh, Chief of Police. Uh, he's served, uh, a long time as interim, so, uh, congratulation to him, as well as the six new officers that, uh, we just badged. Uh, that's a great, uh, that we were able to continue to, uh, uh, increase the numbers of, on the, uh, force as well. Um, also, I attended the, uh, testing down at East Suffolk Rec Center, uh, last week, and, um, I tell you, when I got there, it was a long line, and, um, but it was moving right on through, and people was very nice to each other and tried to stay socially distant and all, and, um, they was afraid they might have to extend the time if they had enough because the line was still long at 1:00, and it was supposed to have been closing at 2:00. So, uh, I didn't stay till the close, so I don't know how they end up at the end, but, uh, people were still coming, so that was great. And with now they're being able to get to test, uh, kids sit to homes, so that's going to be a plus as well, so I hope people will go online and do that as well. And with that, be safe with the weather coming up, and, um, I'll say good evening. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start off by also congratulating Chief Chandler on his selection. I wish him success, because his success will be our city's success. I'd also want to recognize, uh, Narendraa Pleas, who was sworn in on the 10th of January as our new Commonwealth attorney, following the retirement of Mr. Phil Ferguson, who served for over four decades in our city. And I look forward to working with both of these individuals as we can, continue to address safety issues in our city. Um, I want to recognize and thank those six new recruits, uh, that I had the good fortune to speak of, to speak at their badge, badge-pinning on January 13th. I want to thank you for your willingness to serve our city and for your willingness to enter the profession in that service to our citizens. And with that, I will move to our quote of the week, which is appropriately from Dr. Martin Luther King, and he has many, it's hard to select. I went through, and I said, well, I've got, you know, with Martin Luther King, uh, celebration on Monday, I said, well, it would only be appropriate to do a Martin Luther King quote. And I got a couple books and did a little research, and actually, uh, there's quite a few, uh, rather, I mean, I, I don't know what to say, but I could probably do one of his every week and still have plenty left over at the end of the day. But I chose to select one in particular, and that is, uh, from a speech on February 1968, uh, quoted a proper sense of priority speech, and that is, and I quote, "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but he must take it because conscience tells him it is right." And lots of times, sitting on a dais, those are the type of decisions that we have to make. They're not easy. Sometimes they're not popular. Sometimes it's going to cost you a vote, but I think everyone here votes with their conscience, and I'm proud to serve with every one of you. And with that, I will ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett.
Some move.
Councilman Williams.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Doeman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by vote of eight to zero.